Okay. I'm Tim Skogans, Chairman of the Shasberry Select Board, and I'm calling this meeting to order at 6:30 on Monday, November 18th, 2019. First, let me check with the board, does anyone have a conflict of interest with anything appearing on the agenda this evening?
No.
No. Okay. Minutes. Try again to approve some minutes. 10:21, we need Tim, Ken, and Tony, so we can't do those. And last week's. Ken, Art, and Joe. So we can do the last meeting, so. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for November 4th that were circulated?
So moved.
Moved by Art.
Second.
Second by Joe. Any discussion, additions, or corrections on the minutes? All in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, abstaining. So the minutes for November 4th are approved, 3:01. Alright, warrants. Let's see here. Looks like we have just one more, check warrant number 12.
Ah, saving paper, aren't you? Somebody's using my own button.
Check warrant number 12, in the amount of $84,224.01.
So moved.
Motion approved from Tony.
Second.
Second by Joe. Items over $1,000 here. $1,600 to ANK Agro Services, which will be gravel hauling again.
Yeah, that's truck.
$6,900 to American Rock Salt. $6,500 to Blue Cross Blue Shield. $6,000 to Bennington County Sheriff, no, Bennington County Regional Commission.
That's a solid waste plan.
Okay. $2,900 to Bennington County Sheriff. $1,100 to Built Blades LLC.
Winter's coming, they're playing with the plans.
$2,000 to JA Mahar Monuments for...
That was cleaning of tombstones.
Comes out of the cemetery.
Yeah, it's the cemetery.
$21,000 to Merck Snow.
That was for credit card payments that came in late, has to be transferred to him, so that then it can be transferred back to us.
Takes his cut out and then sends it back.
Yeah, I'll be talking about that in a minute.
Yeah, we talked about that before, I recall. $11,000 to Peoples United Bank.
That's the water farms.
$3,100 to Peoples United Bank, both of those?
Both of those, yeah.
$1,100 and several others for Ribco Supply.
That's a whole bunch of the culverts, fabric, things we've been using in our construction. Yeah, losing signs in there.
Okay. $5,600 to Sullivan &amp; Powers. That would be the audit again. And $1,700 to Wallenford Crush Stone. Any other discussion on check warrant number 12? All in favor of approving, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstaining? So check warrant number 12, in the amount of $84,224.01, is approved, 4:00. Dave, you need a new folder.
Joan won't give it up.
She'll just put more tape on it.
She'll put more tape on it. It's like her chair, she won't give it up. Tell her to put more tape on it. Okay, are there any announcements?
Christmas tree lighting ceremony.
Yes.
December 8th, 4 o'clock, Santa Claus will be arriving.
Okay, good, excellent.
4 o'clock, December 8th here, yeah.
Okay. One thing I wanted to announce, just because I just opened this piece of mail when I got here, from Comcast, talking about a program they call Internet Essentials. And it is discounted internet for qualifying households. Internet Essentials provides high-speed internet for $9.95 a month, plus tax. And you have to qualify if they have, it says if they have at least one child who is eligible for National School Lunch Program, or if they receive public assistance through such programs as Housing Assistance Medicaid, SNAP, SSI, and others. So if you want to give this a try, see if it works for you, there is a number here, 855-8internet, or you can go to internet essentials dot com, and I will post this on the web, so that you can reference it there. Any other announcements? Any public comments? Treasurer's report, Colin Dexter, welcome.
So I don't know what Dave mentioned, we did not have computers at all today, all day, so I wasn't able to do my reports officially, but I just ran off a little bit. All I was going to talk about really is about taxes, which are done officially. I've worked through even all of the ones that were postmarked on time, so everything now officially goes to Merck. I did want to talk a little bit about the flurry of credit card payments I got at the end, which I was delighted. We ended up with 65 people paid online with either a credit card or a check transfer, which I think that's really a lot more than last year, and people are starting to think about this as an option. Unfortunately, of those 65, nine of them were after the deadline. And some of those people, I just hate that they got, they're going to have to pay Merck a penalty, and they had to pay a hefty fee. The credit card fee is 2.65%, and they really would have been better off just not doing it. It is timestamped, they were definitely late, these nine payments. So that's that check that you just approved on the warrant, is all of that money has to go back to Merck for him to work his magic on it. He's going to go after these people for the, for his fee, and then it'll come back to us again. It's a lot of extra steps, and I just, it really probably was not a good decision on their part to try and pay late with several hundred dollars for the actual, using the credit card. So next year, don't do that. Do it on time, or else you're going to have to pay Merck directly. So that, the total amount that people ended up using Unisipay for was $178,000, which is great, of which 157 of that was actually on time. So at the last day, we had, I think, 25 or so people paid using Unisipay. So in November, I took in over $2.4 million in taxes, so that was just in those, basically in those five days. It was pretty busy here. But we got through it, we always do, and I think it was pretty smooth. I had to leave on the Friday before 5 o'clock, but you had just a couple.
Yeah.
Dave and Joan held down the fort, made sure that the box was checked at 5:00 PM, and we got it down to a science now. Any questions about any of that?
On paid taxes compared to previous years?
It seems to be a little bit more people paid on time than last year. Last year it was, it's always within a couple percentage points of 20%, but this, last year it was just under, just under 80% paid on time. This year, it was 82.46, although a little bit of that's going to have to come back out again when we write the check to Merck, but that's just rounding error. So it's going in the right direction, I'm happy to see that. I wish we could get it even lower.
Yeah, it still is a big number, isn't it?
I think it's in line with...
That's high. I don't know if it's high, but it just seems not necessary.
And it's hard to move it. Yeah, it's tough, I mean...
Do you know how that compares with other towns?
I don't, actually, that's worth looking at. I think that, you know, different towns have such different makeups of...
Some that pay quarterly, some that pay...
Well, that's true too, there are some, there was a town much smaller than ours that's billing four times a year, and I think that they do nothing but...
Yeah, well, yeah, that's what I was thinking, yeah.
But also, you know, richer towns that have a lot of second homeowners, or people who use a lot more escrow companies, those are obviously always on time. So I'm sure it varies, but it would be an interesting number to see across towns, especially others that are more like us. But it hasn't moved much in the years that I've been doing this.
Okay.
Any other questions about that? There's not much going on in the reserve accounts, just late water payments. Water, you probably talked about this in the water meeting that took place before this, but the water bills are out now, right after tax bills, so I'll be dealing with those in the coming weeks. We also got a Class 3 road grant, that's the only other thing going on in the reserve funds. And I know that my computer is now working, so as of the next meeting, I will have these things on time.
Okay, good.
Anything else?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good one.
No. Do you want to thank us?
Oh, yeah, and the reason there wasn't a payroll warrant was also that I didn't have access to my computer, so you'll have two for the next week.
Okay, was that going to be a problem?
No. Those actually, go through afterwards. And the computer issue is fixed, we're not quite sure what happened. Marlene's worked all day, mine worked and stopped, and then worked. Adam came, and just got it all back up running, but different computers are doing different things, couldn't figure it out, there's no rhyme or reason to it. Normally you can reboot the router, you can reboot different boxes that we each have to boost the signal. And, you know, I got mine to come back and change a couple of settings, worked fine, and it stopped again. But the internet was always here, it was just internal, it was in the local area network, it was very strange, but it's all running now. It was pretty disruptive for the work. Computers go down, they're basically...
You're scaring me.
Yeah.
All it takes is an EMP.
Okay, roads report. Dave, you got something to tell us?
Well, the guardrails in on North Road.
Oh, Ken will be so happy.
Yeah, I put that in today, one day job. So that's done. Essentially, down to winter prep, sorting out where the things are going to go for the winter. We're waiting the truck to come in in December, and hopefully North Bank's truck will come in, so we can get the truck repurchased from them. It's the wind down season, so that's, losing a lot to report right now.
Notice the guys are still out there, though, they were cutting trees on my road.
Yeah, we're doing trees, and that'll continue all winter, and we'll get down to actually spending the tree budget, taking down trees. We'll have to talk to Jim Wyden, see what he's thinking of with the ash mower and that, and, you know, with all the issues we have with trees, the third half, or anything, it's just like, yet another...
Didn't I need that?
No, it's just another series of things. But that budget, we'll blow through that in February probably, in a couple of weeks. But it's good, it takes down enough things, but we keep moving forward, that's the best we can do with it. Take down some of our more offensive trees, and like I said, see what Jim thinks about which ash trees, or all ash trees we should go after. It's a difficult situation at best. The back is clear completely now, it's been returned to the property owner. We did discuss, what we're going to do is we're going to grade off the top gravel, and then we'll put down some kind of, like a conservation mix on it in the spring. Peter asked me if we could try and grow some grass. But there's enough gravel on top, Mike was saying, I don't know, we'll do it now, maybe in the spring. Take the grader and grade some of that material off, and reuse it somewhere, and then we can spray it, you know, with our mulcher and the mix, we can do it in pretty much no time. And it'll grow right up, and it'll be green back there, and then, you know, Peter can, whatever he wants to do with his property. And then, of course, like I said, the building will go in the spring. We'll have these trucks advertised soon. We had a problem with the title for one of them, it still needs a title, it's not quite over 15 years.
15, is it?
Yeah, it's 15 years, so. The other one, we could give away, the Chevy out there is useless too. People want them, people have asked about them. Someone was actually trying to start one the other day. I go out and ask who it was, yeah. They're like, "Well, we heard you were selling them, we wanted to see how it ran." Stop inside.
Maybe he's going to steal it. When it started, they probably want it.
Yes, I think they were a little disappointed they couldn't get it started, but it is as is where is, so you'll do the best you can. Other than that, it's basically getting ready for winter, tomorrow morning, I would suggest everybody leave some extra time, because something is coming tonight, and it could be nothing, or it could be ice, or it could be sleet, snow, whatever.
From 9 to 11, I think?
Yeah, yeah, so we'll wrap this up. Yeah, no, it's a mixed bag all through tomorrow. It seems to be worse, much higher up than us, but you never know.
Right.
You never know. But that's really all I have for roads tonight, so pretty straightforward.
I've got a couple things. Talking to Mike, he's been talking to people that, in the springtime, we have these sinkholes, where there's an area that just, and you dump gravel in, and it just sinks down through, so we go in with a big stone, and that screws up during the summertime when you're trying to grade. He says that some town that he's talked to, sinkholes there, they lay a layer of fabric over it, put gravel on top of that, which doesn't allow it to go sinking down into it, and so he's going to try that. I think that's kind of interesting. What you do with it later on, I don't, I think you would be ripping it up, because you weren't bearing it six inches down, but boy, if it gets you through that period.
It's better than those big rocks you haven't used in too, because I always get complaints about the big rock. Yeah, if that's an alternative, it works, that sounds good.
He was a little bit excited about that. Of course, he's also talking about looking for a used mower or something like that, because...
Yeah, we've talked about alternatives to mowing, because we have, we're looking at like rental for $12,000, Mr. Hosley for another $12,000. So it's like, you know, if I find something, we'll talk about, let's see what the prices are, you know, maybe we can work it in, maybe we can't. Mowing is still, what's the best route, and, you know, with Dave leaving the business more or less, he was supposed to be gone already, where it looks like we're going to have to be back on our own again.
Yeah.
I don't see any way around it.
What we paid him just wasn't worth it for one swipe.
Yeah, it has to be more, and if we have to dedicate somebody else out there, then maybe that's what we'll have to do, but the gear we have now, it's okay for touch-ups. But we need something, we got a lot of roads. We bought one in Sunderland, I used one, but we don't have that many miles. Here, we're going to have to have a half decent machine to do this.
Well, you had me pretty well convinced that the renting the mower was the way to go.
Oh, yeah.
Mike wants to buy a used one now?
Well, yeah. Here's what happens, he rents it for a month, but because we haven't done it in so many years, that thing is really doing a big job, so at the end of the month, it's got to go back, and we've only done half the town. Next year, deciding the town that they did do it is, will be a lot quicker, because you don't have to spend all that time pushing back and that sort of stuff. But yeah, the more you mow it, the better it comes in. You end up having, just doing it for one month, even if you were able to do the whole town in one month, isn't going to, you're going to have to come back again. So all of a sudden, you're talking about maybe two months' rent, which is what?
$24,000.
$24,000, and he's saying that money could go towards the machine. It's a thought.
Yeah, which is why when we talk about, it's like, well, go find some prices, let's look at longevity, and you can evaluate it, because, yeah, like right now, we have to kick back, so, you know, I would take the other one out and burn that out at the same time to make it go faster in these years of catch-up. But, you know, for $12,000 for the month, Mike and I were talking about, well, maybe we should pay people to work 12-hour days, just pay overtime, maximize this thing, you know, get more bang out of it that way.
That's a possibility.
There's other ways to look at this, so we're not sure, but we might as well keep abreast of the prices, too, and see what...
Well, the mowers, I mean, new, we're talking over $200,000 for one of these things, right?
He was hinting not, and I don't actually know. That's why, bring the information in, you know?
Yeah, let's look at it, but I still have a bad taste in my mouth from all the money and time we spent on that mower tractor before.
Don't judge that.
Yeah, but still, you know, a mower, it takes a beating, and...
Yeah, but I'm surprised at the number of towns that have them, too.
Yeah. I have two, and because the rental provides so many benefits, you know, there's no ownership, it breaks, send me a new one.
No ownership, man, it's cost.
Nothing, $12,000, it's here and it's gone. But, you know, it's $12,000 a month, we can run it as many hours a day as we want.
True.
So...
Use it for other applications as well, couldn't you?
No, this would just be the mower, it takes so long to mow, we have so many miles of road. Yeah, the staffing, which is why we went down to Hosley, but I think we're fairly stable now. And again, with coordination and programming and knowing which direction you're going in, you can work in someone to do that for the period of time. And also the fact that we're branching out more into having contractors spend time with these projects. A lot of projects were done this spring. A lot of roadwork was done over the summer. So in the same time, a lot of trees came down, a lot of ditching was done, so I think we're in the right direction, and we have to keep looking at all these alternatives and see how it blends out. You know, there's certainly a catch, because at some point, it's like, no, that's just not going to happen, because we just don't have the money to do that. You know, but we should explore the rental versus used. He was telling me you can get decent prices on new ones, but I don't know, let's see. I have no idea, I have no idea what a new mower costs, but we should explore all this and come up with a decision, because we're up to 24 easy without manpower for the mower every year. But the manpower is a fixed cost, if you look at it in this context. But again, like I said, maybe a way to expand this is, why not offer overtime, four days a week, and pay overtime to get the roads mowed. Pay a Saturday to get the roads mowed, maximize the machine while it's here. You know, cost analysis on those things would be worthwhile, see what's the most effective.
Okay. Yeah, let's look at what it comes up with, but yeah, let's not discount renting yet.
Yeah. This year, we have a mixed bag in the budget, because we have Hosley coming for half, and the rental for the other.
Oh, you are having Hosley?
Yeah, yeah. Well, he's doing part of it, I have to have Mike explain. I thought we were going to rent both, but he said Hosley's coming along, so.
Good.
All right.
If he's still in business.
Yeah. All right. Are you ready to talk about FY '21 budget?
Yep.
I have the budget from the Dropbox, do you want to put that up, or is that...
The budget from the Dropbox is the, yeah, that's the last iteration, it's the last one that I intend to make any changes to.
That's one. There we go.
You're going to have to squint.
Okay, Dave, you want to...
Well, essentially, this budget just starts out as being, if you look at, I don't know how to start this off. The total budget for this year is equivalent with inflation of the budget in fiscal '15. If I split it with the, the budget in '15 was $2,001,000, and this is $2,179,000. Inflation over that period brings, would have brought that fiscal '15 budget up to $8,000 less than or closing this year. So going into the seventh year here, we're still below the inflation rate over that time period. And it's just from changing the way we're doing things and moving things around. We've increased, mostly increased, the entire increase in this year's budget is going to road projects. It's actually over 100%, because we've moved money from one place to another to increase a lot of the items in the highway department, just to get things going. We've upped the paving reserve, $10,000. We've upped the Class 3 road fund, $6,000. We have...
Say those numbers again, where?
The paving budget went up to $10,000, from $35,000 to $45,000, because we get the grant every other year, and we need the 35 to match that, so in the meantime, it gives us $90,000 in the off-years to do the other paving projects we need, like fixing some of the other roads. Because of our 14 paved miles, I believe like seven are our roads, so we need to have money to fix those, too. Then there's a whole...
And the Class 3 road fund is up to what now?
Is, will be up to $55,000 from $49,000. Well, we have a benefit from the floor vote last year, they upped gravel to $90,000. Leaving that in gravel gives us the flexibility, we don't need more than $90,000. As of today, we are probably just below 50% of the gravel budget, and that's through our main construction season. So we'll have a carryover from this year, of course, mud season is going to absorb a chunk of that, usually $25,000 to $30,000. So we can be putting a lot more gravel down when we do the spring grading, to use up that $90,000. So I think that was a good thing to leave in there this year. We have to up chloride, we're using a lot more chloride, sorry, I'm jumping around too much.
The reserves are in a different place from the...
Yeah. Yeah, because we have, you can go down a list of this one. Subcontract is the same, sign's the same, we're upping tree removal another $2,500. Bridges and guardrails, we're just dropping off, because you're never going to get a bridge for $2,000.
No.
And the guardrails, when they come up, can come right out of the Class 3 road fund. Operating supplies have gone up, because we're doing a lot more things inside the garage, keeping it clean, equipment supplies, things like that. Gravel's saying, does it say chloride, I'm sorry, it's $10,000 is going up in chloride, because it's a great way of just dealing with some of these things. Winter salt and winter sand are staying the same, because that hasn't been a problem in the prior years. And in those, if we have a really bad winter, yeah, we're going to be over. If we have a really mild winter, we're going to have a surplus. I found these figures kind of have worked every year, plus or minus a little bit.
So chloride's going up 10%?
$10,000. $10,000, yeah. And that's not price, that's just, we want more. The more chloride we put down, the less dust we have, whether the roads pack. And with the roller, more chloride.
Safe for roads.
Yeah, hopefully we're going to get as strong a surface to all the roads. Rentals went from $4,000 to $15,000, but again, that's into renting the mower, want to make it clear where that's coming from. And then, of course, the municipal road general permit I'm anticipating going up, which is the $2,000 at the... And then, of course, the municipal road general permit, I'm anticipating going up, uh, which is the two thousand at the bottom, which we have to pay the state every year to have a permit for our roads. Next, uh, these one thousand, two thousand for, uh, budgeted for each vehicle, haven't really been accurate for years. This is more an accounting thing, just putting a number in here, but I've increased them all to bring us up to a more reasonable amount for working on our vehicles. The rest of the items in this column really don't change much, the gas, oil, and machinery and equipment. Although I did raise the machinery and equipment four thousand also, just to provide more flexibility in buying materials to work on the trucks and things. But, we had a couple of bad years here of a lot of repairs having to be done to these trucks. Since Mike's come here, we've started going through, through the fleet, we've spent substantial amount of money on these vehicles, and these are not old vehicles. Uh, the truck we spent the most money on so far this year is only six years old. And it's kind of stunning we have to spend that much money on it. So, it's not, they're not old, it's just not serviced the way they should've been. So, we are sending a lot of this out, which is driving this cost up, too, but not spending all this time in the garage being mechanics is getting a lot more work done on the roads. So, uh, I think we can absorb it now that most of the trucks have gone through a round or two of repairs and everything, that these prices should stabilize and repairs should stabilize. There's always gonna be a truck in this, these environments, though, that are gonna be trouble. You know, and of course, on the first snowstorm of the year, uh, one truck did break down temporarily, it wasn't too long before they got it out. And one of the tandems had, was already at the lorries, waiting for an oil cooler that was backward. So, we didn't even have it when that snow came. So, the trucks occasionally, we're gonna have these issues. And it always seems the first snowstorm is when, when we have them. But I think we're, we're getting to a more realistic number by moving this up to two thousand and fifty. Uh, and like I said, each truck, one truck will absorb, uh, ten thousand of this, where another vehicle will get a thousand dollars, so. It's really just an accounting thing, having these all equalized here.
Right.
The rest of the budget stays.
It kinda makes me wonder if that could be a single line item.
No, that's the first thing I wanted to do, and I was told we can't do that.
Okay, by the accountants?
Uh, no, by, by, by Joan, and Joan rules, so that's. Account payable told me I can't do that.
Okay.
Uh, it, it makes sense, because you can go back and pull up truck five has had this much.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what it boils down to. But, no, that's the first thing I thought, I was like, why do we have all these lines?
Yeah.
You know, but, uh, yeah, it does help that way, and.
At a glance, you can see who's costing what.
Well, yeah, you can see what costs what, and what we're doing now, uh, also, uh, now that we're kind of out of construction season, and Mike's gonna have more time, we're, uh, backfilling a lot of data from all these repairs to see actually what is going on in these trucks, so we can start really tracking along to see, why does this truck keep needing this part, or why does this need that?
That was gonna be my, my next suggestion, was we, we should be keeping the maintenance records uh, in the shop and not in Joan's desk.
Yeah.
That we, you know, we should, we should be able to, you know, the, the road foreman should be able to look up when somebody says, I need a new engine in this truck, he should be able to look at his records of maintenance and say.
And that's, that's what he's started now, I just provided all the Morse bills since he's been here, to start building a database with those, and then we'll move to the lorry, and, well, that's pretty much it, the lorry and Morse for the repairs. But then, as the, the, you know, just get into the allied auto bills, cause each part is assigned something, so, the what truck it went in. And you can just start seeing, okay, where, what is this? And you can identify, maybe it's a problem truck, one truck is a problem truck. You know, it's that international, the one, the cursed one, from the fire and everything, it's, it's, uh, it's a problem truck. And, but, you know, you have to start following, it's the Dodge. You know, uh, we can start tracking and see what's going in, and maybe identify, this shouldn't be happening. You know, why does this keep happening to this truck, how's it being operated, what happened to this tractor, whatever that.
Who, who does the preventive maintenance on the vehicles, do we do it, or do we contract that out?
Well, the, mostly the basic stuff, we'll do oil changes, things like that, I mean, routine maintenance. You know, you, when you bring in your, your loading thing, you should be greasing them, things like that. But now, um, any real work is going out to Morse, because what happens is you start to lose a guy or two in the garage for the day. And a six-man crew, it's a lot of people.
Yep.
Not out doing what their job is, cause their job is not mechanics.
Well, and two some jobs start out being one thing and they end up in others, so it's.
But during the storm, I think it was, I think it was Tim's truck broke a hydraulic hose. Yeah, you just get it in, and he replaces the hose in there, and gets back out on the road, you know, that's, we don't take it completely down. But, you know, that storm is also a bit of a problem, because we don't have the North Bennington truck yet, cause their truck got backward, and we don't have the new Chevy yet. So, in a couple of weeks, you know, we'll have back the redundancy in the fleet that we want. Uh, it's just unfortunate, neither of those are here yet. I think North Bennington is getting a truck fairly soon, so we'll have, uh.
What did you put in for the rescue squad?
Oh, I, I spoke with Art Giro, Art, yeah, Art Giro. Uh, and he said, we're, they're leaving it the same this year. You know, he's just walked in the door.
Yeah.
He goes, uh, you know, we'll leave everything the way it is this year, because we just can't get around to dealing with it, which is, is fine. So, we'll leave it at the twenty-five, we'll see where things go over the next year. He has, uh, a lot on his plate right now, he has to digest where he is and what's, what's going on.
I think we're seventy-five, is that right?
Twenty-five.
Thirty-five.
Are, are we buying North Bennington's truck?
We already bought it, we just don't have it.
Okay.
We, we agreed to buy it, but their chassis was delayed, and now, I'm saying, the truck is being assembled. So, hopefully, they'll get delivery of the new truck, and we'll be taking possession of their used truck. We agreed to that, like, eight months ago or something.
I didn't know we agreed to it.
Yeah, it was, we, you might forget, it was a long time ago now, frankly. Uh, cause they wanted to know if we wanted to buy it, so they could go ahead and buy the new one.
I remember, cause I brought, I brought up the, I mentioned about the truck bouncing off the tracks.
Yeah, 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 we, we went all through that stuff, and, uh, yeah, but we agreed to it months, months ago, uh, for thirty-five thousand.
So, are you were still talking about the rescue squad?
Yes, what, what, I just wondered if you kept it the same, or?
Yes, twenty-five thousand, uh, like I said, I spoke to the head over there, and that was, uh.
Okay.
That's what it was last year, right?
Yeah, that's what it was last year.
Okay, I guess.
Yeah, cause that was, uh, I think hold out there. Cause we went from seventy-five to fifteen to twenty-five, and we held.
Okay.
Twenty-five.
That's, that's where this, yes.
Yes, seventy-five would be a lot.
And they were.
Seventy-five hundred is what we started on.
Yeah, seventy-five hundred is what we started on.
And they were pushing us to get to forty-two thousand at one point.
Way up there, yes.
We pushed back.
Yeah.
Figured it to get there, right?
Yeah. Yeah, so we'll, we'll see, uh, we'll see next year, we'll know.
Does Mike have access to the budget, the, uh, yeah, the budget? I mean, maybe only read-only, so that he can take a look at it, instead of having to keep paper copies?
I can send him, he doesn't have NIMRAC access.
Okay.
And NIMRAC, uh.
Would they give him access, read-only, even just read-only?
I don't even know if it is read-only on NIMRAC, I'll have to find out. But I can just print them out, or I can scan it to him, so either way, he can have it in front of him.
Well, just so he can keep track, too, I mean, it was always helpful.
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah.
You know, I had access to the budget, sometimes, depending on where I was, it was.
I usually just tap them on the phone instead of getting close.
Oh, okay, yeah, oh, yeah, well, yeah, well, he always counted on a second person.
Yeah, but, uh, actually, we never really, uh, uh, the times we talked about the budget or where he's at, you know, I'd kinda look at it, if he tells me we need this truck fixed.
Yeah.
I, uh, to a certain extent, I look at it like, well, I gotta find a way to fix the truck.
Yes.
A lot of his stuff is more essential, but that's like when we came up to the end of that last year, we got a little close, and it's like, okay, it's a freeze on everything, you know, let me know what you need, and we'll let you know if you can get it. But, you know, I, one of the trucks I brought up with him, uh, was, I think it's the thirteen international, which is well over twelve thousand dollars in repairs this year, and he's like, what is going on with this truck? And it just, and that thing is one thing after another.
Yeah.
And it's hard to even link the things together while it's going like that. And, uh, uh, we discuss this stuff fairly frequently, you know, where things are going, but, uh, I mean, he can always have, and he knows he can have access to whatever he wants.
I'm just thinking.
Yeah, no, I don't.
To train him, I'm thinking for him in the future, you know, just to continue to, for his education.
Yeah.
He's going somewhere.
Yeah, let me, let me, I don't even thought about NIMRAC over there.
Yeah.
Read-only, yeah, yeah. Yeah, because we each have sections that the other ones can't get it.
Exactly, yeah.
Which makes it, uh.
Yeah, which is standard.
Yeah, yeah, which is standard, yeah. Well, look into it, not just too bad, I was on the phone with NIMRAC tonight, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll look into that.
So, uh, on the road budget, if we step back a little bit, um, we've been talking for several years that we needed to, uh, we need better roads. Art's talked about people complaining about potholes. Where, it sounds like we're holding the line on the budget pretty well, is that, is that gonna get us our wish of better roads, I guess, is where I'm coming from.
Well, already turned the corner on it, in my opinion.
I think the roads are definitely better than they were a year ago, I would agree with that. Um, I guess, um, you know, if, we did a lot of road projects this year, uh, we had a lot of grant help with a lot of those. Are we covering the projects that we need to in this budget, the capital projects that we need to?
Oh, I think we will, we, we're already working on a sixty-thousand-dollar grant, uh, we just don't know where we're gonna spend it. And of course, with the municipal road general permit, we do have to address certain things first. Uh, that's always the whole point of the erosion survey and the culvert survey. Uh, this estate gives you a list, we have to meet it, we have plenty of time to meet this, believe me, we have tons of time to meet it. But, we still have to address the, the high-risk ones, as they put it. But some of these are fifty, sixty thousand dollar projects, so we have one grant that Mike is looking at alternatives, and we're gonna discuss with B C R C and Fitzgerald Engineering on, uh, Wednesday, I think. And, uh, we'll come up with a place to bid for that, to put out the bid for that, and that'll be part of it. Over the last few years, we've increased the highway area materials and other things, a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars in, in two years, which includes the forty thousand that was voted off the floor last year. So, uh, we are dedicating a substantial amount more into working on the roads.
I don't think we're ever gonna get to the business of replacing five miles with an inch of gravel every year. Of course, according to Kenny, that's not necessary, but, uh, we're a long ways from that, but we're, we are definitely looking at better roads.
Yeah, yeah, well, I, I, my thinking has changed to the, to the, we've got probably several years of capital improvements, like we did this year, before we get to that regular maintenance.
Yes, yes.
Um, are we, uh, I, I think we're confident that, um, last mud season was, was horrible. If it's horrible again, it's gonna have to be horrible in different places, right? We got, we addressed the horrible places this year with our capital improvements.
Yeah, we, we addressed the, the, some of the worst spots, most definitely the worst spot, the hill on Shaft, on Shaftway Hollow, which was close to a ninety thousand dollar fix, in fact, it was a little over ninety thousand, I think. And we've done a few with Sal again, and at Murphy Hill, we, we did quite a number of projects. Uh, we will have, cause we upped the culverts, so we can start putting in more culverts under drains. Myers Road, we put the under drain down that, cause really, what these, these really wet spots that, that explode during, um, mud season are, are from the waters just under the ground, springs, or the swamp trying to get from one side of the road to the other, and then it just comes up there. So, we put in a lot of under drains this year, and I really think that's going to be one of the big ways of solving these problems, is doing that.
Do we have more of that to do?
Oh, yeah, yeah, we have lots of that to do. And, uh, we have West Mountain, that has to go in, uh, that's the only one we're gonna get to, the second one on West Mountain. Uh, and then, a good way of judging this is during the winter, see what pops up during the winter, and then go back. Now, if this mud season, the last mud season was pretty exceptional. Uh, I think when schools are stopping buses from wells all the way down to the Mass border, you have kind of a unusual situation. But on the average winter, we've had some roads that were pretty nasty. And that's what we can solve with a lot, is these issues. You know, the under drain is a great idea, they're, uh, not difficult to do, they can be time-consuming, uh, but we can contract those out to people. Uh, we're working a lot more with the state engineers, we're working a lot with the state engineers that are free to look down and draw up plans and how to address problems. Uh, we use them on bids, the state plans, when we put out bids, use, uh, here's the design, exactly what you have to do. So, it's been very helpful. But I think we're, I think we're on the way to making all the roads better. Uh, it's not gonna happen overnight. And as Art said, the idea of, uh, you know, re-grabbing the roads according to what the perfect timetable was, is still down the road a little bit for, for us. But we are, you know, and during the course of the year, we do put a lot of gravel down the roads. It may not be as scientific as the, you know, the X number of inches on so many miles a year, but, uh, that's because we have a bad spot here, a bad spot there, a bad spot here. And when David's grading, uh, you know, material goes out, because he finds a spot that needs more material there, so. I think we're, I think we're in the right direction.
I do.
And I think we, again, which has always been my thing, you know, we have a direction. I think we have, have plans, we have, uh, you know, we're executing a lot more things, and we're doing a lot more work. And it's part of everything, from just putting out the repairs to somebody else, to just keeping everybody out and, and moving. So, I think we're, we're making big progress.
Okay.
Of course, unless the potholes in front of your driveway, and then we're not making enough progress.
Uh, we like potholes on our road, it slows people down.
Well, I get that complaint, too, you fix the road, now everybody's speeding.
Well, that's, that was my.
That's gonna be a problem.
It is, that's what I was thinking.
It is gonna be a problem.
Yeah, and some people are already at, at amazing speeds.
I'm amazed that they come down our road.
Which, uh, which might be a good transition to my sheriff's department, uh, little spiel.
Okay.
Uh, going back to the last couple of years, uh, you know, when they were off by fifty hours, uh, fifty hours. In fiscal eighteen, they were off by a hundred and thirty-eight hours from the max. And remember, our contractor says this is the max, and he can't get sheriffs, he can't get deputies to be out, I mean, we're not gonna do it. Last year, we were two-hundred-and-sixty-nine hours off. And this year, we're already close to four, if you divide it evenly. But, you know, we're four-hundred hours behind, uh, you know, you can't make that up. So, I mean, you can, if you wanna do really inefficient pleasing. But I think, it made me think, maybe, maybe it's time to reduce this down a little bit more, and really get involved sheriff's office and have some proactive directed policing at what really our problems are, that they address. Mostly traffic. You know, and any shift, they can be called out. Uh, of the hours so far this year, like thirty hours have gone to, to investigations. It happens, nothing you can do about it, you know, it's rare for them to get that deep into something, but it happens, I know what it was, and there's nothing we can do about it. But for the most part, we're talking about traffic enforcement. So, we start with a little list of where to go, and I was getting nice radar reports and everything, and I think if, if we work closer and in more detail with the sheriff, like, we need something done here, and we need enforcement here, we need enforcement there, in patrol. I mean, we have, a guy will check in at eleven o'clock at night and check off at midnight, and that's one of our hours. And it's like, well, this is not really doing us any good, cause I have trooper barracks over there, and troopers driving through town, because fortunately, we're kind of in the middle of their district, with their headquarters in, in town. So, I mean, we have troopers driving through town, we're gonna be the first response to, to anything, most times, uh, with sheriff being the backup.
So, um, so we have this schedule that we change every few months about where we want them doing traffic control, you're saying they're not doing it?
Well, they don't, they don't do it every day, they, they go out when they can, but I think if we get more involved in really breaking down what we want, and talk to them, and it's gonna take more effort on our part to really, hey, this week, and start having.
Well, I thought we were doing that, we said we want them doing traffic control on Monday in the Village in the morning, and Tuesday on Bank Street in the.
Yeah, well, you can ask them that, but they're, they're not gonna be able to guarantee that, and they won't always even have a. Yeah, well, you can ask them that, but they're, they're not gonna be able to guarantee that, and they won't always even have a deputy to do it at that time. That's where we really need to get into detailed discussions with them. Uh, because I read the patrol reports all the time, and of most of them, you get a lot of, uh, driving around. And, uh, I remember when, uh, in Sunderland, we had the issue of, because we hired the sheriff just like here, and he's out on seven A. Well, like a sliver of Sunderland's on seven A. You know, we really want you in here. You know, we all live on, off Two Streets. We really want you in here. You being, you know, by the, by the old basket bill, isn't really doing us much good. So, if, if we look at trying to work with them, you know, cooperatively and targeting things we need done as much as they can, because you can never have, and, and believe me, I went through this too, people, oh, we need somebody here at this time. Well, you know what? We can't, we can never guarantee we'll have somebody there. And because we don't even have a staff, it's, it's who they can come, get to come in on a Monday, Tuesday, or Wednesday. Uh, they do the best we can, but it requires a lot more follow-up. And they kind of dropped off doing the radar sheets that I wanted, and it just shows you what's being done. The, the tickets, I mean, we're not getting. From all nineteen, all I could find on the patrol reports was seventy-four summonses issued. And that's not, not a lot. Uh, because we all, we all drive here. We all see people who can get summonses, so, uh.
But we're not, we're not paying for these hours that we're not getting.
No, we don't pay for them. It's just, you know, I'm reading this, I was gonna call you, but I'm reading this as they're having trouble filling these slots. Otherwise, believe me, if they had, if they had someone to send over here, I'm sure we would be, someone would be here. But I'm reading as, we're having trouble getting these slots, and then I see someone, like I said, coming, coming in at midnight, or he's in from ten to twelve, or, you know, they're all fragmented shifts. I would rather try and work to get, say, get me somebody for, at the minimum, four-hour block, and do this, this, and this. Get me a guy for eight hours, and have him come in and run a shift in Shaftberry, because there, there's so few hours, even what we're doing now, there's so few hours, it's not like you see a sheriff every day. So, let's work on, on block scheduling and have him come in and really do some enforcement for, for the time he's here. And they do do the building checks. They check this building a lot, Howard Park and all that, which is great. But, uh, I think we need to start working closer, and they can't, they can't fill our seventeen hours, so. Uh, I'm just thinking, well, the fourteen hours is about what we're actually coming, is coming out of the budget now. So, why don't we just leave them to have them do the fourteen and see if we can up the levels of performance during the fourteen?
Um, well, yeah, I think we need to have this conversation. I mean, I've, I've really come to question the value of paying them to drive around randomly in town whenever they feel like it. Uh, we had, we thought we were getting more of our money's worth when we were having them do traffic control where and when we wanted it, but it sounds like that's not happening.
Yeah, it's, it's been sporadic, and that's part of the conversation where, um, you know, I've had, fought with the captain a few times, and I think we just have to really get a program together. This is, this is what we want. We want real.
They can't commit to a schedule right now because of the lack of manpower.
Well, I, I don't wanna say he has a lack of manpower, but you know, the way the sheriff saw it, it's not like he has a man of staff, and, uh, a lot of them go out on assigned traffic jobs. So, we're getting the patrol deputies when, when they're available and when they can be called together to help fulfill our seventeen hour, who's it, seventeen, seventeen hours? A week. And we're not getting the seventeen on an almost weekly basis. We're not getting the full seventeen. Which, again, I was gonna call him, but I think on a face value, if there could be seventeen hours of somebody here, he'd be, get seventeen hours of people here. So, three and fourteen in policing really doesn't make any difference. It's what you do with the fourteen you have. And maybe we need to make sure that we're getting, like I said, a more direct and proactive fourteen hours than what, what we have now.
Um, yeah, I agree. I, like I say, I don't know that I'm seeing much value in, uh, sheriff driving around randomly for seventeen hours a week. Uh, you know, if we could afford, you know, a hundred and fifty hours a week, it would, you know, might mean something to people in terms of, uh, knowing that we have a police presence here, but, uh, I don't know that there's a lot of value in just, uh, seeing a sheriff once every, once a month.
Yeah, and, and if we really work on a program, uh, well, like, what I used to do when running the traffic division, is, you know, you really can pose people, that what we lack here is any significant accident history anywhere, except for maybe East Road. It's not significant, but, you know, I'd rather see a guy over on East Road a few times, set periods for a duration, and then move to West Mountain or something, and actually be there enforcing. I don't care if you park at the end of the cemetery or you're doing radar. People are gonna pass you, and you will. I think you could probably sit on East Road for twenty minutes and have your first speeding ticket, you know, uh, and really get out and do that. Driving down the road, it's not really what we need. It's not, it's, that doesn't, in, in an urbanized or at least suburban area, that does have an effect, but here, the car's gone, you know. It's not gonna be back anytime soon.
Okay, well, uh, so we, what do you wanna do? You wanna?
Well, I just wanna change the budget line to, uh. Sorry, I thought it was an exact forward.
Like you said, seventeen hours a week to fourteen hours a week?
Yeah, it goes from forty thousand, one forty-three in the twenty budget to thirty-three thousand, seven forty-three in the twenty-one budget. We just, the three hours a week, and adds for a three percent increase in its fuel costs and everything else. And just, like I said, it's what you want, but we're gonna have to get on top of it.
But what I really want is for them to do traffic enforcement.
Yeah, enforcement, yeah, yeah. And, and I think that's the bang for the buck when you're looking for this. It's like grant money we used to get for enforcement. You know, and then you go out and you show the flag and you enforce.
Right, right. Okay.
I mean, which includes warnings, by the way, which is, is always the discussion for warnings. But seventy-four summonses in a year, when I hear an awful lot of complaints about people speeding, is not a big deterrent. And the troopers simply have too big an area to cover, and they do what they can here, but, uh, yeah, they just have too much.
Okay.
Uh, well, we can go anywhere on this. If you want, like I said, this is my final thing. I've been plucking away at this, but.
Um, I have not gone through it line by line. Any other changes you wanna bring to our attention?
That was major change, and just the highway stuff.
So, this is in the Dropbox?
Yeah, this is all in the Dropbox, yeah.
So, we can download this and.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and go through the whole thing.
Okay. I think that's.
Yeah, this isn't like to be approved tonight. Uh, this is just, normally, we would talk about this in December. I'm not gonna be at the first December meeting. Uh, and we, we'll have to play with this anyway, because, yeah, I don't even have all the community appropriations in. I'm hoping they stay relatively the same. Uh, I don't have next year's insurance bill yet, so. Uh, town insurance, the medical insurance we have already, so. Uh, there's always gonna be a little tweaking to this. Before, I mean, we have till mid-January to adopt this, but I just wanna get this going.
So, bottom line, this year's budget over last year's by how much?
Is eighty, I don't know, eighty?
Eighty-six.
Eighty-seven thousand.
Eighty-seven thousand.
Okay.
Which is eighty-seven thousand directly into roads.
Right.
Because it's, it's really not going anywhere else.
Good.
Because the rest of it is just moved around one way or the other.
All right. Is that good on the budget?
Sounds good.
Okay. Okay, item ten, um, internet communication union district on the March ballot. Um, there was a meeting called by Kathleen James, who is the state rep in the southern end of Manchester, and a number of towns, uh, in this direction, Rupert, Sandgate, Sunderland, Shaftberry. Uh, we're in attendance to talk about, um, the new bill that passed, uh, last year. H five thirteen, I think they're calling it Act Seventy-nine now, which, uh, provides, uh, help for towns to get internet access. We've talked about it here before. Uh, at one time, we were thinking we were going to try to, uh, go it alone and do it like Chesterfield, New Hampshire, uh, did it with Consolidated. Uh, we looked at the numbers there and decided that probably was not gonna work here, uh, for a couple of reasons. Uh, one, they had a lot less coverage by Comcast than we do. We've got like seventy percent coverage by Comcast, so that makes it less attractive to somebody like, uh, Consolidated. Also, we cannot even be a cosigner on the loan, which is essentially what they were. Uh, so, um, that, that plan is not, probably not gonna work here. Um, which puts us back to what the bill was really designed to, was to help towns get together, form communication union districts, and, uh, then get a grant for their communication union district to see how big they should be, how many towns should be involved, uh, what, uh, kind of coverage they have now, what kind of take rates they could expect if they get, uh, a, a provider to, to come in and try and serve their area. So, at this meeting, we heard from, uh, Clay Purvis at the Department of Public Service, and we heard from Stan Williams, who is the president, CEO of, um, Valinet, which is the company that's serving EC, the EC Fiber District, which is the example that we're all looking to right now of how you do this, and they have done it, and they're, they're, they're making it work. Um, from that meeting, uh, an internet task force was formed, which is the people that were willing to actually try to make something happen. And what we're probably gonna try to make happen is, um, form a communication union district in southern Vermont. Uh, how big, we're gonna talk about it at our next meeting, which is this Wednesday. So, we're actually moving pretty quickly to try and make something happen. Uh, but according to, to one of the people there, Stan Williams, who, uh, made this happen at, in east central Vermont, uh, he said, "Form a communication union district, and, uh, the more towns, the better." Because the bigger package of business that you can offer an ISP, the more likely you are to get somebody to fund it, to, to do it, uh, more likely you are to get, uh, uh, funding. And, um, and he said, "There's no downside to it." Uh, there, if you form a union and it doesn't work, you can dissolve it. You haven't lost anything. There's no financial obligation. There's no threat of financial obligation. There's no possibility of financial obligation. Because it's against the law in this state for tax money to be obligated to telecommunications. So, uh, what you're, what you're looking at doing there is forming this, uh, communication union district that, um, you hope to, uh, put out an RFP and have somebody service it. And the reason that they might do that is if you're a communicating, uh, a C U D, you can access revenue bonds, which are bonds that are paid for with the, the revenue of the clients of the internet service, not by the taxpayers. And that as a C U D, you have access to cheaper capital than an ISP could get if they just went to the bank. So, that's what makes, we hope this thing works. Um, but if we decide to form a C U D, um, we can start with two towns, and any number of towns can join after that. Um, I, last I heard, and it's been a week or two, Wyndham County was headed in that direction. Uh, and they were applying for the feasibility study grant through the bill, uh, based on a county-wide plan. Uh, we, uh, I think at some point, it would make sense for us to talk about a, a southern Vermont plan if the idea that bigger is better is really, really true. I think whether or not that goes may depend on whether or not Wyndham gets their grant for their one county. But, uh, regardless, I'm thinking that, uh, what I'm gonna suggest at the meeting on Wednesday is that we start putting together towns and, and try to, try to make this happen as a way to, to get something done.
If, here you've got, put it on the March ballot, if no taxpayers' money is involved, does it require a vote of the people?
Yes. Yes, the town has to vote to join the communication union district.
The town as, as a number of people, not just a select board.
Correct.
Okay.
Correct. So, if we wanted to do this, um, that's what we would have to do, is, um, put it on the March ballot, put it to the voters. Do you want to join a, a C U D?
So, it'd have to be some explanation to, to them.
Yeah, yeah. There'll definitely be some, some politicking involved in getting the word out on what we're doing and why we're doing it, and why people should vote for it, and why they shouldn't worry that it's gonna bankrupt the town like it did, uh, and with Burlington Telecom, which is why it's not legal.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Do you think we would combine with Northshire, or are you thinking east-west?
Um, the, at that meeting was Shaftberry, Sunderland, Rupert, Wes Rupert.
Sandy.
Southern Manchester, some Manchester people were there, because there are parts of Manchester that are, uh, not covered. So, um, one of the things we're gonna talk about in, or the main topic of discussion on Wednesday is how big should we try to go initially? But I think it would be good if, um, if we could go to them and say Shaftberry is on board to try and do something like that.
Good.
So, uh, I think it would be helpful if we had a motion just, uh, uh, of intention to, uh, join a communication union district.
Sounds good. To move?
Well, a motion from Art, um, to, um, place on the March ballot that Shaftberry should join a communication union district.
Second.
Second by Tony. Any other discussion, questions?
I think it's essential that all the towns use the same verbiage going on the ballot.
Yeah, there, this is all very prescribed. At this point, I'm just looking for essentially intent from Shaftberry.
Yes, okay.
Um, yeah, uh, state statute essentially decides how you do this and what you put on the ballot. So, there's, it's really, um, uh, there's not a lot of uncertainty. You just check it off according to state statute, and if the, the vote happens, then you're, you have a C U D.
Okay, yep.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. So, the, my vote of four zero zero, we agree that we should strive to join a C U D and put that on the Mount, March ballot. Thank you. Okay, any other business?
Uh, one thing I did get off, uh, download, uh, tonight was this business of, um, Vermont League of Cities and Towns wants us to.
Right.
On the cannabis.
Yes. Um, I saw that.
I haven't had, I wanna read what, what their reasoning is, but I'm not too excited about the whole state.
You're not too excited about?
Uh, it says that they want each town to, uh, recommend to their legislatures that they follow through with it. And I don't, I don't understand it, so.
Yeah.
Until I read it.
Follow through with what?
Um, what I was, uh, reading from V L C T is they wanted us to push our state legislatures to, um, give towns a lot of the control over the legalization of cannabis.
Okay, well, that's what I need to read.
Yeah, and shared revenue, which is a key part, too.
That's what I thought it was a revenue gap.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not, uh, V L C T was not advocating for legalizing marijuana. They were advocating for, uh, when the state does legalize marijuana, that it's not all done at the state level, that the towns who are gonna be, uh, you know, how, how, hosting the, the stores and the farms and the processing facilities, um, have, have a say in it and share in the revenue.
And non-creative towns, too.
And, I'm sorry?
Non, non-active towns. Like, if you don't have a dispensary, you don't have a production facility, you would be entitled to part of it, too. It's an interesting read.
Yeah, I thought it was kinda weird.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay.
That could all be in the Dropbox, too.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, okay.
Oh, oh, it's in the Dropbox?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's, it's an interesting, you have to read it twice, or maybe three times.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's all catch.
Yeah, I guess the first thing I thought about that was, how is that done with, say, alcohol sales? You know, because all the, the liquor stores are state-run liquor stores, right? Uh, the, that's all from the state down, though. We don't, we don't get any say in that.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I think, because they're still discussing how, if they go to legalization, how it's gonna be done.
For recreational sale?
Yeah, yeah. There's also just plain decriminalizing it, and not saying anything about it, and not addressing things. So, they really need to come up with a plan. VLCT thinks that the communities could share in the, will probably be quite a large tax revenue from it. So, they have a point. If it's inevitable, then maybe all the towns can get a portion of it.
Well, I mean, the thing is, more and more often, they keep finding more medical uses for it, so it seems like it's not going away.
Yeah.
It's, you know, it's here to stay, and if people were smart, they would get on board. There is money to be made, lots of tax revenue, I believe.
We're gonna wind up being surrounded by states that legalized it.
Yeah. Well, it's legal here.
Yeah, yeah, we are already.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, Ken has brought up several times that he wants us to put on the ballot, the question, should we vote the budget by Australian ballot, as opposed to town meeting?
So, don't we have to discuss it at the town meeting first?
I don't think so. I haven't looked into the mechanisms yet, but I, I thought we, we decide what goes on the ballot, and it has to be decided by a ballot initiative.
Yeah, I think, look, if you wanna go forward, I would just get the wording for how to do it, and then it would just be discussed at this town meeting. Because the vote at this town meeting is for fiscal twenty-two.
Right.
So, you know, I know we discussed editorial or something to put it out there at the appropriate time. Because there really isn't, there's no sentence in having a pre-vote, it's just, if we wanna have a vote, just put it on the budget ballot this year.
Right, right. But I mean, I don't, if we, if we're gonna put it on the ballot this year, to take effect next year, my thought was, we do that from here, that we decide to put it on the ballot, not go to town meeting on Tuesday, and then put it on the ballot a year from that, and to go into effect a year after that.
I thought it had to go on in front of the board.
Yeah, I don't, I don't.
I'll double-check that, but I'm pretty sure, I mean, because it can be done by petition. People could get a petition and put it on the ballot.
Yeah.
And I think the board has the same right to put it on the ballot, because it does come up, you know, frequently. And the people can just vote up or down, very simply.
I think there needs to be a lot of education on it, though.
Right.
I'm hesitant, unless the whole board is, thinks it should go that way. I'm hesitant that people will think that we're, the select board is behind it, if we put it on the ballot. I personally am not. It should go before the people, I agree, but I, I don't like it.
So, if we got a petition from the community, then we would, then have?
Well, the petition can go directly to the town clerk, because when you do the petition, you have the wording for the ballot article, you get enough signatures, it goes on. So, unless it's patently illegal, but. And any group could just petition and give it to the town clerk, and it would be on the ballot.
Because it's always a fifty-fifty thing.
Well, I mean, if the rest of the board thinks that we should go that way, then, then I think the select board can put it on, but I, unless the whole board wants it that way, if we put it on, it kind of is inferring that we are in favor of it. I would put it on just because I think the people have a right to see it. But I think there's gotta be some discussion. There's gotta be some, they should know what's gonna happen if they do put it on, or if they go that way.
Right. So, Ken's for it, Art's against it. Tony?
I'm either way, I really am. You know, I agree, I understand that people want that ability to do that, but I also love the idea of the town meeting, and I think Shasbury Town Meeting is a prime example of, of pure democracy working, and people being able to vote from the floor. And you, I mean, those two hundred people that show up are gonna be the ones who argue against that Australian ballot, because they made the effort to go out.
True.
So.
I'm on offense. I might like you, so, don't know really which way is the best way to go.
Okay. I have been on the fence. I'm actually starting to lean toward Ken's opinion, just based on the idea, one, when I looked it up, most towns do it by Australian ballot now. And because of Ken's point, that it really leaves you vulnerable. We've never had a problem before. I didn't have a problem with the motion that was made this last year to increase the gravel budget, but you are really exposing yourself to the risk that thirty people show up and decide, you know, they wanna cut their taxes in half, and they could do it. Because, you know, the last meeting, like, maybe fifty people showed up. It's not two hundred, I don't think. In the good old days, maybe, but.
I wish it was two hundred.
Not since I've been in town.
Yeah.
Okay. We got torches and pitchforks.
Okay, well, we got until we, we.
I bet it does, maybe.
So, we, we got until the, we print the ballot to decide, which is end of January.
Yeah, mid-January, we'll have to have the wording.
But we need to, we need to make a decision, and let, start letting people know what our collective opinion is about it, so. We'll give it some more thought. I don't wanna make a decision when Ken's not here, because he's the one that really wants to be able to argue for it, so. We'll continue to debate that. Any other business? Okay, the two action items I caught tonight were, Dave's gonna schedule a meeting with the companies that answered our proposal for engineering study on waterline replacement, and I promised I would put that bit about the low-cost internet onto the web for people to hear about. All right, if there's nothing else, is there a motion to adjourn?
So, move?
Moved by Art.
Second.
Second by Tony. All in favor? Aye. We stand adjourned.